Call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting. As you can tell, Mayor Jacobson is absent, he's ill. I'm not doing a ton better, so might as well have a feral cat running this meeting, but I'll do my best. Okay, clerk will note that all counselors are present. Mayor Jacobson is gone and excused. Ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations, couple of announcements. Post Falls City Hall and City Business Offices will be closed Monday, May twenty-sixth in observance of Memorial Day. Police, fire, and rescue services for life-threatening or in-progress emergencies may be reached by calling nine-one-one. The police department will be open for walk-in emergencies. For water-related emergencies, call two zero eight seven seven three three five one seven. The City of Post Falls and American Legion Post one forty-three will co-host a Memorial Day ceremony at Evergreen Cemetery on Monday, May twenty-sixth at eleven a.m. to honor the brave men and women who gave their lives and service to our country. The community is invited and encouraged to attend, and it really is a great event. With that, we have a couple of appointments. Entertain a motion to confirm the appointments of Lynn Crosby and Jerry Lyon to the Industrial Development Corporation.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Stig Leder?
Aye.
Plu?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight?
We have none tonight, sir.
Do we have any declarations of conflict, ex parte contacts or site visits? No public hearings, so I guess that doesn't really matter much. Consent calendar.
Item A is minutes from the city council meeting on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, special workshop. Item B is minutes from the city council meeting on May sixth, twenty twenty-five. Item C is accounts payables for May seventh through May ninth, twenty twenty-five. Is that date correct? It's only two days. Jason's not here. Item D is March cash and investments report. Item E is fuel service contract. Item F is wastewater capacity replacement fee agreement for sixty-one eighty East Seltice Way, Westwood Brewing Company. Item G is the ARC subdivision construction improvement agreement. Item H is computer equipment disposal. And item I is Crown Reserve Master Development Agreement, SUBD dash two four dash five.
So what's the best way to handle item C, since that's probably not the correct date range?
Looking at it really quick, see if I can get that for you.
Yep, me too.
It's probably the nineteenth would be my guess.
Looks like it was through May twenty-first.
Yep.
Do we need a motion to amend the consent calendar to reflect that date?
I don't know that the date matters a ton. It's just as long as it's clear that we're doing it through those dates.
Okay.
So it'd be accounts payable five-seven through five-twenty-one.
Yeah, it says May first through May ninth, sir.
Which is it?
It's, so, I think you can say for checks through May twenty-first.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-five.
Any discussion on the consent calendar?
I have a question about item F.
Yes.
So, the fifteen thousand worth of extra wastewater that was accrued over how long? That they're paying back for?
So that is a capacity fee, so it's a one-time fee that they pay for the amount of volume they're using, so it's not a user fee. So they're just paying, they're just purchasing additional capacity.
That they haven't used yet.
That they have been using, but the price is the same, yeah.
Right, so they were paying for less than they were using, right?
Not on the user fee. They paid when they purchased their initial cap fee, they bought under the amount that they needed, and now they're buying the additional amount they need.
Okay, and why is it that they didn't buy the appropriate amount that they needed in the first place?
Because they estimated, city, when we do the estimated cap fee for them, estimated at a lower number than they actually are using.
Okay, and so then, did their users' fees increase at all to reflect the increased usage that they've had over time?
So they've been paying for the actual user fee at the correct usage.
Okay, and so are we, we're just allowing them to pay that over how long, the fifteen thousand?
Thirty-six consecutive months.
So it's, yeah, three years.
And the cap fee is just that one-time fee, then it doesn't reflect any timeframe? And we don't charge any interest over those thirty-six months for that?
We do not on that fee. We have not been charging interest on that.
Okay, and it was an underestimate on our part or on the business's part?
So they come together when they do the building permit and come up with the estimate, so it's a collaborative effort between the business and the city.
Gotcha. I just, I think this is the second time that this has happened, at least that I can recall since I've been up here. And I wonder if we can maybe be a little bit, look at how we're estimating and where we're off, so that we can not have to recoup fifteen thousand over three, three years. Since we are looking at tightening up our monies in a real, real way. So that would be my request on that, so thank you for the answers.
Yeah, we can look at that. I can say, I know they were looking at how they actually go back and evaluate whether someone is over or under. And so I know they've been having those conversations, so.
Yeah, so essentially, we loaned fifteen thousand over like maybe four years then, because they probably paid their cap fee a while ago, right, when they connected?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so that's my concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I would move to approve the consent calendar as presented, with the exception of the edit of dates on item C.
Second.
Motion is second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Plu?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Stig Leder?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearings tonight, we have none. Next is unfinished business. First is the Spokane Street Rehabilitation Project Contract Amendment with Welsh Comer Engineers.
Good evening, Council President Malloy, members of the council. I'm John Beecham, Public Works Director. I am here pitch-hitting for Andrew Arbeni tonight. He is unavailable to come to the meeting, so this is a relatively simple change order. It's more of a cleanup change order than anything. As a bit of refresher, and I won't go through all the exhaustive details, Spokane Street Rehabilitation Project initially went from the Spokane Street Bridge to I ninety. And then at the request of ITD, we added a portion that went to Seltice Way, just to get the whole corridor done at one time. This is the timeline on that. I think the important thing to highlight on this slide is that there was an agreement that ITD authorized to pay us seven hundred thousand dollars to accomplish this work. And the part we're talking about tonight applies to that seven hundred thousand. When the initial phase of this year's construction got underway, there were some traffic restrictions on the on-and-off ramps to Spokane Street. And some of those were causing safety concerns as traffic was backing up onto I ninety. So in efforts to improve that, a number of things were tried, different traffic control methods were tried, different signal timing was attempted. And as part of that, we asked Welsh Comer to use their traffic modeling software to help inform which of those would be the most successful thing to try the next day and the next day. Some of those were implemented, some of those were implemented more successfully than others. Ultimately, the situation was improved as a result of this modeling, and ultimately, the situation improved a lot when the detour, or when the closures went away. The amount that is requested for this work, and I, as I mentioned, this is work that has been done. We asked Welsh Comer to do this because of the safety elements of it. We wanted to get as much of an improvement on that backup onto I ninety addressed as we could. So the amount of the contract amendment is eight thousand dollars. There was a five thousand dollar contingency, which covers not enough of that, so we're requesting tonight an additional three thousand dollars be authorized for Welsh Comer's contract. As I mentioned, ITD had authorized seven hundred thousand dollars for this work. To date, we are at, with the traffic control adjustments, that number should actually be about six hundred and four thousand. That change order has been addressed since this was submitted. But the total amount that has gone into that is still under that seven hundred thousand dollars that we received from ITD. Worth noting, the project is basically done. There are a few small items that need to be addressed. One of those is a second coat of the striping paint, but the others are much more minor than that. And our next steps on that are just to see it through till final completion. We did talk to you a few meetings ago about the roundabout at Spokane Street and Pole Line. That is basically proceeding as a separate project at this point, and we'll be back to talk to you about that sometime in the future. Do you have any questions?
So we do still anticipate coming in under the seven hundred thousand dollar mark by the time this project's completed, correct?
Correct.
I think it's great. I think they've done a fantastic job, so thank you so much.
Credit for that goes to Andrew and his team.
Very good.
Entertain a motion?
I move to approve Spokane Street Rehabilitation Project Contract Amendment with Welsh Comer Engineers.
Second.
Motion is second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Stig Leder?
Aye.
Plu?
Aye.
Takes care of that one. Up next is an ordinance for the Chauver Auto Body Zone Change File Number ZC dash two four dash one.
I move to place the ordinance, Chauver Auto Body Zone Change File Number ZC two four dash one, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion is second. Clerk, please take the roll.
I have a question.
Well, we can discuss too.
Yeah, sorry. What was this, we saw this a long time ago, right? What was it that caused it to take so long to get back to us for the ordinance?
Sorry, I don't see John. So a lot of times, these are just waiting on approvals from the developer and getting things wrapped up as far as their application process goes. But on this particular one, I, I don't know.
Nothing notable.
Exactly why, but it's not uncommon for the annexation ordinance to, to come back after a period of time.
Gotcha. It just seems like some of the smaller ones take, for some reason, take longer, and I just wanted to be conscious of making sure that there isn't something that keeps happening to those ones that make them take longer, as opposed to some of the bigger developments that we approved that seem to come back by like the next meeting, so.
Yeah, and, and that, that is usually because they are larger developments or things done quicker on their end and get it back to us. So that might be just a function of the parties.
Sure, and if there's something that is, continues to reoccur with the smaller ones that we could be more helpful for, I'd just like to be aware of it so that I could advocate for that a little bit better.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of back and forth that takes place. I mean, that's basically what you're describing in the sense of cities going back, back and forth, back and forth, and back and forth, so it can be a staffing and timing issue on both sides.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions, comments? Clerk, please take the roll.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Stig Leder?
Aye.
Plu?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Field, you're up.
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls, Cootney County, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for a change in the zoning classification for the land located at two-nine-one-five East Seltice Way from heavy industrial HI to community commercial services CCS. Providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I move to approve the ordinance, Chauver Auto Body Zone Change File ZC two four dash one, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Stig Leder?
Aye.
Plu?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. New business. First is the Prairie Trail Extension from Zorros Road to State Highway forty-one. Mr. Paulus?
Good evening, councils. Robert Paulus, city engineer. Yeah, come on. So tonight's staff is staff is requesting city council's approval to put the Prairie Trail Extension from Zorros Road to State Highway forty-one out to bid. At this time, if you approve that, it does not commit the city to expending any dollars at this time, other than the costs for Welsh Comer, our consultant, to manage the bidding process, which was previously approved in the professional services agreement with Welsh Comer. So the City of Post Falls has three major bicycle and pedestrian paths that go through the area. We have the State Highway forty-one trail, which was recently built within the past couple of years by ITD, running from Seltice Way and the Centennial Trail up to Rathrum. We have the Centennial Trail, which runs from the state line where it connects with the Washington Centennial Trail, and runs all the ways to Higgins Point in Cordelane. And then there's the Prairie Trail, which runs from its connection with the Centennial Trail in Cordelane and up towards State Highway forty-one. There are two sections which are currently missing on that trail. One section, which is over at the intersection of Prairie Avenue and Meyer, there is a proposal and there is funding to put in the Prairie Trail undercrossing, and that's scheduled to happen next year with the Prairie Widening Project. Part of the requirement for getting that to construction next year is they need to finish acquiring rights of way for the Prairie Trail Widening. But everything is moving towards the direction for construction of that project. It has been moved up from twenty twenty-eight to twenty twenty-six. The other portion, which is the portion we're discussing tonight to go out for bid on, is approximately a quarter mile of Prairie Trail from Zorros to State Highway forty-one. This is what the area currently looks like. There is a old borrow pit, which runs right next to where the old railroad bed used to be. In March of this year, we hired Welsh Comer and Associates, along with Budinger and Associates, to do a geotechnical investigation in the area as to what is the best way to fill in that pit, and then provide the construction plans and specifications to fill in the pit and construct the asphalt path, which is going to be fifteen feet wide with three-foot gravel shoulders on the, at the, at its completion. With approval, it would go out to bid and be bid twice, and the bid opening would happen in June, and construction would happen yet this year. I stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions?
I would move to approve Prairie Trail Extension from Zorros Road to State Highway forty-one.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Westland?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Stig Leder?
Aye.
Plu?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Motion passes. Up next is Railroad Quiet Zones. Seems like this comes up every three or four years.
Well, that's not too bad. Six years ago was the last time that city council heard this. Good evening again, city council. I won't reintroduce myself. So back in twenty nineteen, city council previously heard the consideration for establishing railroad quiet zones in the City of Post Falls. More recently this year, there were some inquiries on that, and staff was requested to come back and present to city council how we can move forward with looking at railroad quiet zones. So in terms of railroad tracks through the City of Post Falls, we got two main rail lines, the Burlington Northern San Francisco Railway, that runs up in the northern portion and just barely touches the City of Post Falls. And then we have the Union Pacific Main Line, which runs through Post Falls and goes through a number of residential areas. You also have the spur line for the Burlington Northern, which is the red dashed line, which comes down through town and goes out to Hutter Road, and a very short piece of Union Pacific spur line out by State Highway forty-one. In terms of the BNSF spur, which really impacts traffic in the City of Post Falls, there are twenty-two crossings, four of them are signalized, the remaining are either stop or yield controlled. That rail line has a train that comes through once or twice a week. It's a very low-speed train that comes through. For the Union Pacific line through the main area of Post Falls, there are twelve main crossings, eight of them are signalized, four of them are stop, stop or yield controlled. That train, the railroads will never tell you exactly how many times they come through, nor what times they come through, or how often again. But based upon just general observations and discussions, somewhere between eight to twelve times a day. So what is a railroad quiet zone? A railroad quiet zone is a section of track which is designated for train horns not being required to be sounded at public crossings. Now, I want to stress the part about not required. When we get into the key features, the bottom one on the exceptions, this comes up very big, the railroads are very stringent about, and the Federal Railroad Administration backs them up, that the engineers on those trains have the right to blow the horn anytime they want, if they feel that there's a safety issue, a trespasser on the railroad, or work, workers in the general area of the railroad. So they always have the option to blow that horn for safety reasons. Key features are horn silence. You reduce the number of times that the horn is going to be sounded, because the engineers are going to know that the area is generally safe, and that they don't have to blow the horn as often. Safety improvements are always required in order to establish a railroad zone. Those would be put together based upon coordination with the railroad, and the railroad would be the ones responsible for putting in those improvements, but it's at a hundred percent of the cost of the public authority designating the railroad quiet zone. The railroads themselves are not super in favor of quiet zones, but they will support the federal regulations towards them, as long as they go through the right process to establish them legally. Any improvements have to be done in accordance with the Federal Railroad Administration regulations, and I've already identified what the main exceptions are for quiet zones or when they can still blow the horn. Back in twenty nineteen, the Cootney Metropolitan Planning Organization put together a policy for establishment of railroad quiet zones in Cootney County. They took a look, and they limited that their applications should be either on the BNSF or Union Pacific Railroad main lines, because the spurs have minimal use. Recommendation from that policy was that if you are putting in any components to put in a railroad quiet zone, that you should bring that entire railroad crossing up to current standards. And then they identified that the preferred locations would be suburban land-use areas with residential densities and within, that are within a quarter mile of the railroad itself. That's pretty much the Union Pacific Railroad line through town. Existing quiet zone, there is one in Cootney County, and that's in Rathrum on Mill Street, that's been in place since twenty-eleven. And the potential quiet zone that was looked at and identified within that policy with KMPO was the UP Railroad Line, and had fifteen crossings from McGuire Road to Meyer, covers nine miles of track, has the residential densities, and it had the ability to be expanded out to the state line, which would pick up another about four crossings going that direction. Along with the policy, there was put together an informational guide by KMPO, and it had input from KCAT, which is the Cootney County Area Transportation Team. City of Post Falls was involved in the formation of that informational guide and policy. It covered what is a quiet zone, which we've identified, how are they established, we've generally identified this evening. What are the main safety measures that are allowed? Those are usually street closures, which are probably the cheapest one to put in. Grade separation, which is probably the most expensive form to put in. And then you have four quadrant gates, where you put gates on all four corners of the railroad, so you have gates, so there's no way to try to run around the gates. Two quadrant gates with medians, where you put gates down, and you have a median for at least sixty feet back from the railroad crossing to try to diss, dissuade people from going around and cutting across the railroad track. One other item which was not on there was one-way roads, because we really don't have any one-way streets, and we're going to try to avoid those if possible. The informational guide also identified costs, and they looked at advantages and disadvantages of railroad quiet zones, and identified priority locations in Cootney County. So the area that was looked at as a priority is the UP Railroad Line. And in twenty nineteen, they identified a cost of eight point seven-nine million dollars to implement. On top of that, there would be an annual cost to keep maintenance on that, which is just monies that you're paying to the railroads for them to maintain their facilities. Back then, it was estimated at ten thousand dollars per crossing per year. Eighty percent of the cost of that project would have been the cost of putting in a bridge at Pole Line Avenue for an overpass. If we push those dollars forward to twenty twenty-five, we have an estimated cost of around thirteen million dollars. Ten million of that would be the Pole Line overpass, and another two to three million dollars, or two to three million dollars would be the cost of implementation estimated if we did not put in an overpass at Pole Line and looked at something different, like maybe closing the roadway. In today's dollars, and based upon what I've seen with other locations around the country, we could estimate something between seventy to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in costs to the city to keep the annual maintenance in place. One thing to note is that this is a planning-level cost. We haven't gone out there and met with the railroads and done an in-depth study to really find out what improvements are fully needed. The other item to keep in mind is that a lot of the costs of installing this do not qualify for a lot of our normal funding. Transportation impact fees are for capacity-related improvements. More than likely, anything you identify for a railroad quiet zone is not going to affect capacity very much, unless you close a roadway, and then it's going to be, what are the ancillary effects to the surrounding roads? So railroad quiet zone probably would not qualify for impact fee dollars. The other item is, you tend to look at grant dollars as to whether or not you can get grant dollars. Railroad quiet zones in and of themselves do not rank very high for, for grant dollars, because they don't impact overall safety very much. If you have a crossing that already has a safety problem, then it can rank higher up and able to get some dollars. But when you look at an entire corridor with at least twelve crossings, getting dollars to do all twelve crossings are going to be a very difficult thing to do. So city staff reached out to JUB engineers, who's doing our transportation, or transportation master plan right now. And we inquired, what would it cost to put in and further look at railroad quiet zone implementation as part of the transportation master plan? The cost that came back is ninety-five thousand four hundred dollars. And the work would include public involvement, have some additional stakeholder meetings, and then have an open house, which would tie into the last open house that we're planning for the transportation master plan. JUB would be doing preliminary work, research, to make sure that we have everything updated as far as the requirements and standards from where we were in twenty nineteen. We would organize a diagnostic review with the railroad, so we'd go out to each location, look at the safety issues that exist today, and also what the railroad identify as needing to be done in order to look at a quiet zone. We'd get a conceptual design for each crossing, and then a cost estimate for what the actual implementation would be, and then a final memorandum. Again, I want to stress that the difficulty is, we are looking at ninety-five thousand four hundred dollars to analyze this, but right now, we don't have an identified source to come up with what could very possibly be several million dollars to implement. And a railroad quiet zone is not very effective if you only do one or two crossings in a five or six-mile corridor, because the railroad is going to be blowing the horn where it doesn't have that quiet zone adopted, and so the people downstream are going to still hear that horn at each of those crossings. Benefits of a railroad quiet zone? Railroad quiet zones can improve the quality of life, and they can have a positive impact on economic development. If you do have existing safety issues, it can address those. Disadvantages? Improvements may not have a safety impact. If you already have a safe crossing with the gates and arms that are there, but you have to put in other improvements, it doesn't necessarily make the system safer. And again, improvements are not capacity-related, and so we have the question of spending the money to do this study, but not being able to fund it in any time in the near future, or how would we move forward in getting those dollars? And then you have after that the annual maintenance and permitting costs, which can be up and over a hundred thousand dollars a year, which we would have to figure out where to fund that as well. I stand for any questions that you might have, but look for your direction as to whether or not we should have JUB engineers move forward on this contract and add the ninety-five thousand four hundred to our transportation master plan, or if we do not include it at this time.
So I just have, wanted to see if you could confirm for me. I'd done some research on this.
I'd done some research on this a few months ago when we got an email from a citizen, and it seemed like the, my understanding was that in addition to spending all the money and doing all the work to implement this, the railroad in conjunction with federal authorities can at a later time revoke the quiet zone.
That is correct.
Yeah, so, all that, and then you're done. How do? Yeah.
Do we have safety data on hand, or?
We have access to the safety data. Most of the railroad crossings we have in town have been fairly low as far as the number of collisions. The last railroad crossing that we had a significant problem with was the intersection of Spokane Street with this Union Pacific Railroad, and that was back around the 20, I think it was either, I think it was 2020, where there was a fatality at that location. And in 2021, we put in a gates and lights at that crossing. Unfortunate with that fatality, and you know, the sad thing was, the gates and arms were already in the planning stage with Idaho Transportation Department to put them in. It's just, they got put in a little bit too late to possibly help that life. But I can come back to you with more information as far as what is the safety history of the other crossings within the City of Post Falls.
How would that change the designation then as far as funding possibilities? Is there different types of funding that we can incorporate and improve safety that would also allow us to?
So it, it comes down to, when you look at that, it's, if you can demonstrate that there is a safety issue and problem at a crossing, that will push those type of applications much higher up on the grading scale for when they do utilize railroad funding dollars to make improvements at crossings. With any time you have a limited pool of available dollars and people competing for it, the locations that you're going to have the biggest impact in saving lives and reducing collisions, those will get the highest priority. You know, if I was to come and say, hey, we need to get a grant on, I'm going to pick on Grange Avenue where the Union, where this Union Pacific line crosses, there have been no collisions there in the last 10 years that I'm aware of. And so if you made a grant application for safety dollars there, they'd go, there's no gates, there's no lights, there's no collisions, how is this unsafe?
So in your estimation, would it be safe to say that our crossings probably would not rank high enough to garner those?
When you look at trying to do 12 crossings through the community, I'm pretty sure that a good portion of them, a majority of those, would not rank high enough to get dollars. So then you would still be in the condition, let's say it's $2.5 million, you're still looking at, okay, we might have to invest $2 million, and we'll get half a million to cover one of the crossings or two of the crossings if we've got a couple of easy ones to do.
So then the inverse isn't true either? So if you have an unsafe crossing, you can get funding for more interventions, but if you have a safe crossing, you can't apply to lessen your intervention? So to the point of, like, we have gates and lights at Grange, and at Spokane, and at Chase, and at McGuire. Do they need to blow their horns at all of those intersections?
Yes, they do. Because what their requirements are, there is a higher level of improvements that they want to see in place if it is going to be a quiet zone. So, yes, you would have the lower cost of you have the gates and lights in place, but in addition to that, the minimum requirement would be a median in the roadway that's at least 60 feet long.
Sure.
So, they kind of put you in a position of, they want to maximize the safety of those crossings before they reduce the horns. And a lot of that dates back, you know, late 70s or early 80s, there was a big study that was done out of Florida that resulted in the requirement for trains to blow their horn every time they cross a railroad crossing because they were finding that the number of fatalities and collisions with vehicles hitting trains was significantly higher if the trains were not blowing their horns. And that's why, like, the Union Pacific Railroad will say, they feel that quiet zones put in danger their operators and the general public, and that they don't agree with them, but they will follow the federal regulations to put them in place if the local jurisdiction says we want it and follows all the federal regulations for installing them.
Sure. I guess my question was not necessarily to what we can control, but more a question to the federal regulations, which is, it seems as though you can always keep going, but maybe you can't find actually, like, the perfect spot where you have just the, I mean, our crossings are very, very safe, so perhaps we would have the ability to back them off, and they would still stay very, very safe. But we don't, yeah, we don't have the opportunity to request that, is sort of the point that I'm making.
That'd be an interesting challenge.
Yeah. Which, yeah, we can't ask them, so. As far as the point to cap fees, though, most of the area that you're talking about, maybe not most, but a lot of it is quite new development, right? Where capacity fees were collected. And could you argue that these would be improvements that would be needed because of our increased growth? Because that line existed before growth, and now we have grown into that area which seems to, I wouldn't say request, or I wouldn't say require or demand this upgrade to the city, but is definitely a positive for the city that we wouldn't need had we not grown, which if I understand that correctly is sort of the idea of a cap fee. Yes?
So, looking at the roadway configurations, what we're looking at is to whether or not a improvement needs to be done to the roadway to improve the capacity of the roadway, to handle the design traffic that needs to be going on that road. In the modeling that we've done to date with the existing conditions, and then also what we've looked at for the build-out conditions so far, I did not see anything that was showing that at railroad crossings, we were getting up to a level of service E or F that would trigger the need for putting in additional roadway capacity. If we had, I'm going to, Chase Road, for example. Chase Road is a two-lane roadway, and if the transportation master plan said, hey, we need to expand Chase Road out to a five-lane road capacity because there's going to be enough vehicle traffic on it, then that crossing would be eligible for impact fees to go towards that.
Yes, I understand that part. That's not really my question.
Well, so, putting in gates and arms don't impact capacity.
Right.
And that's where the, that's where the rub comes in in trying to utilize impact fees.
Because that's the only way that you can utilize impact fees in transportation.
Is, yes, is towards capacity, and we can't show that putting in a railroad improvement is going to improve the capacity of the roadway around it.
Okay. I'm just saying, I think that it is still an impactful thing of, from growth, for which we collect impact fees.
Okay.
As if that is making sense. I understand your capacity argument, I'm just saying, like, it would be nice. I would really love to see that. I think it would really improve, like, so, like, the life of so many of the people that live in those areas, but I would imagine, like, most of the council, although I would like to hear the arguments, I just don't think that we have the ability to, to put it on the budget right now, sadly.
Yeah, this one seems like a clear no to me. As nice as it would be to have, we have, the railroads don't like them and think they're not safe, and we would be spending almost $100,000 to study something that we have no funding for, and if we were to try to commit to this, we would probably have to do a bond on the pallet or something, and I can't imagine that passing. And if we did have millions of dollars sitting around, I would much rather spend that on road maintenance or replacing aging equipment, or the police department expansion, or something that really impacts public safety than, I think this is kind of a low priority project and way more expensive than the benefit we would get.
With an end of possibly the railroad saying, that's great that it's here, but we don't have to follow that.
Correct.
Yeah, for me personally, being an old curmudgeon, I mean, the railroad's always been there.
Yeah.
So, this isn't really a safety issue or a capacity issue, it's a nuisance issue. And, you know, I've been around long enough, I've heard people, you know, claim, and it's probably true to some extent, that real estate agents, you know, know when the trains are coming, so when they're showing a house that's for sale right next to the tracks, they make sure that the train's not coming. And so, the people that buy the house don't think about it, but at the same time, if you're doing your due diligence, you see a train track there, hang out there for a few hours and see how many trains go by, and see if you can tolerate it or not. And there's a lot of the city that doesn't exist near a train track, and it's not a nuisance for them, so to force all the taxpayers to pay for improvements that only affect a minority of taxpayers that voluntarily purchased housing along a railroad track, I don't think is really the, the right way to go, in my personal opinion, but.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, all of your, all, probably all in agreement of a project that would probably be nice as an amenity, but paying for those things is, is difficult in this case. I will make the point also, though, having been, I arrived here in Post Falls in 1975, moved here out of my mother's womb, so I remember a lot of sounds that used to be in this community. One of them is the trains, obviously. One was the old debarker at the Malloy-Vernier plant that, I can still hear it in my head. So some of it to me is, is while I don't live right next to a track, so I understand it's, it's probably much worse for those, I actually kind of like the sound of the trains going through town. Reminds me of the nostalgic part of, of Post Falls when it was more industrial-based instead of service and retail, so.
So you're saying, bring back the train horns?
I like train horns, yeah.
Which brings up a question. Rob, there's a requirement, I know, I believe, I had heard it one time, it was too short blasts. But there are times that I hear too short blasts that last 17 to 37 seconds. Do you know?
I believe the requirement says too short and one long.
And one long.
Okay.
And I don't know what the definition of a short versus a long train whistle is for a railroad operator.
Yeah, I just know that there are some times where they're like, really?
Well, I'm hoping that when they do the really long one, it's because there is a real reason that they're doing it and they're keeping the road safe.
Yeah.
May I ask a question, not related to railroads, but not necessarily the quiet, as we're talking about safety? Do we have any control over them being stopped? Because we have so many crossings that are so close together on quite large north and south streets with our increased capacity, when that stops, you cannot get across, well, across the railroad should something happen?
Can you rephrase that question, please?
Yeah, so when the train stops on this rail, railway, right? You can't get north or south of it, and it's, when it stops at McGuire, at Chase, at Spokane, and then at Idaho and Pole Line, you, you can't trans, traverse, transverse, you can't get across it. Do we have any?
The most that we have, there's two things we can do. We, there is a local projects operator or manager, they control Montana, Washington, Idaho, Wyoming, and I'm not sure about the Dakotas, but we can contact that individual. We are in contact with them to discuss the potential of getting a rail crossing across the BNSF line at Idaho Street. We're also currently in conversations with the railroad and securing a rail crossing agreement for pedestrian facility on Chase Road. So we have that individual to talk to. We als, I can also reach out to the local railmaster and let him know about that concern and see what their response would be, and get that response back to you.
Gotcha. Thank you. I'm just, the story that you told about the arms being slightly too late, I would just hate for something to hap, right? I know, I'm not very articulate today, I'm so sorry. So the story that you told about Spokane and the fatality?
Oh, yes.
Right? I would just hate for something where our emergency crews couldn't get to where they needed to be in time because the railway had stopped some of our large north-south roadways.
Understood.
Yeah, thanks.
I have a quick question, just for general knowledge of how this works. So, you mentioned as an example the Chase Road crossing. If that road were ever to be needed to improve for capacity reasons, and obviously then, gates or whatever it may be, the way I understand it is, in order for us to implement a quiet zone, those safety feature, would, features would need to be enhanced past what we would normally do for a capacity increase? That increase in safety measures, could we then use impact fees for that, since it's above and beyond what would normally satisfy the capacity?
That is a question I'd have to discuss with legal a little bit more, but, you know, more from the standpoint of if we're already in there doing widening and putting in the additional capacity improvements, can we add the, look, the next step forward of that little bit of additional elements needed for the future establishment of railroad quiet zone? I, I would want to just discuss that and find out a little bit more whether or not that would be eligible or not.
I think that may be something to keep in mind as we continue to grow, and if we are in the opportunity to do that, when the capacity deems it necessary, it might be a, you know, an incremental step toward a quiet zone through town, just by, by default of, you know, while the, while the street needs work, let's, let's meet these additional requirements for a future quiet zone.
Okay. Anything else of me?
Do we need to vote no for your request, or we just don't need to vote?
I think you give me the direction not to move forward on this, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we don't need a motion, we have the direction. Up next is citizen issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding city-related agenda, uh, city-related issues that are not on the agenda. Anybody like to come up and say anything? Seeing none, we'll move on to administrative and staff reports, and we have a legislative update today.
So I will do my best to keep this brief. You've heard some of these before, so we'll try to power through this. Legislative session just wrapped up a month and a half ago. One of the interesting trends that we're seeing is each year, the last, say, five years, you've seen a record number of bills being introduced every year. So each year breaks the records set the previous year, and so there's a lot going on in Boise, there's a lot to try to keep our eyes on. We try to do our best, given that we're trying to also do our day job, so we're doing it, but we do keep an eye on what's happening, and we try to weigh in as appropriate. Tonight, I'm going to run through a number of things that address all the types of things that we deal with as a city. We, cities are interesting creatures because we do so many different types of things. Some entities, like a water district, they do a pretty limited slice of things. We touch lots and lots of things, so there are more things that happen in the legislature that are of interest to us than there are other, that would, that would be true of other public agencies. So, on the law enforcement front this year, the first bill I want to talk about is House Bill 6. The change here is that the legislature this year changed the law to authorize the Attorney General to investigate allegations of misbehavior by city council members. Historically, the only local elected officials that were investigated by the Attorney General were county officers, because the attorney for the county was the one that would otherwise be charged with doing that investigation, and that would be a conflict of interest. So this year, they have changed that, they've given the AG the authority to investigate city officers, no other elected, local elected official is subject to that. So, yay you, you've won the lottery, I guess. House Bill 7 created a mandatory minimum for possession of small amounts of marijuana, that was a new one. Certain synthetic drugs have now been added to the Controlled Substances Act. As you see greater use of synthetic variants of drugs, that list has to be updated every so often to make sure that we're catching the, the latest and greatest version of synthetic drugs. A number of things dealing with emergencies this session, one of the bills that our law enforcement officers hopefully will not have to deal with is, during a declared emergency where there's an evacuation order, those are no longer mandatory. If people don't want to comply with a mandatory evacuation order, we can't really do much about that. There was a major rewrite, a complete overhaul of the framework and the, and the code for dealing with how we tow or boot vehicles that are either abandoned on the road or parked illegally. It's, it runs to dozens of pages long. It's, our police department's reviewing it, making sure that we're on top of that. Senate Bill 1019, we'll see some of this, hopefully very limited amounts of this, where swatting, there is now, that is a standalone crime in Idaho now, so we can deal with someone. If you call 911 because you don't like someone and say, hey, there's an armed something going on over at their house, and the SWAT team shows up, that puts the lives at risk of those folks that you're sending. It's called swatting, so that is now a criminalized behavior. Senate Bill 1139, this is an attempt to address the lack of law enforcement officers out there. This would allow posts to certify officers who in their past have had a felony conviction in one way or another, where that felony has been expunged, pardon, was subject to a withheld judgment. It's an interesting bill, I, I, again, I think it's I, I, again, I think it's trying to expand the pool of people who could potentially get into law enforcement. Senate Bill Eleven Eighty, this is, addresses the use of license plate readers and this is largely what our current practice is, so this really doesn't have much impact for us. It limits the use of license plate readers to law enforcement and traffic flow purposes, so that means essentially felonies, misdemeanors, traffic accidents. We're trying to keep on top of limiting the use. The one interesting piece of this that I thought was interesting at least, it's changing the law that you no longer have to have a front license plate on your car if your car wasn't equipped with a mounting bracket. Interesting, starting July first. In the court system, there's been a number of changes this year. First, we have a new district judge starting in Cootney County in July. That is a good thing for us locally. We'll have more ability to put things through the court system. If you've been following at all the rollout of the state public defender's office, that has been, I'll be kind, it was underfunded and it is a difficult transition in any way, shape, or form. And so this year, the legislature provided a supplemental appropriation for the rest of this calendar year of six-point-seven million dollars to help fund that transition. They increased the appropriation for next year by thirty million dollars and to address some of the local labor issues that were created. When it went to a statewide system, they decided to pay all attorneys across the state a flat rate regardless of what it costs in each locality to provide that service. So you had significant numbers of people just leave public defense because they couldn't afford to do it anymore. And so this, this will allow them to set wages and salaries on the prevailing market where those attorneys are located. I think all of those are good changes and will hopefully help our criminal defense bar do their part of the job that our prosecutors then don't have cases getting dismissed because we're not getting speedy justice done. Building permit side, a number of changes here as well. One that we don't deal with much is that now, we now have a uniform definition of agricultural buildings for building codes. The codes are different when you deal with agricultural buildings. There would never was a uniform definition. Now we have one, we don't deal with that all the time. House Bill Two-Sixty-Six allows for live virtual re-inspections. So if you're, you've had an inspection and you need to have somebody come back and do a re-inspection, you can do that virtually now. There's some carve-outs, you can't do that for a structural inspection for a building over three stories tall. You may not want to trust what you can see on the screen. There's also some time limits that have been imposed with House Bill Two-Sixty-Six regarding inspections. So if an inspection is not conducted within forty-eight business hours, the permit holder can request or hire a third-party inspector and then the city must refund our inspection fees that would have covered that inspection.
Forty-eight hours of what?
Of the request.
What is a business hour? So is there eight business hours per day, so?
Yeah, so you've, you've got some time and, and we're, this is-
Oh, that's good. I was thinking, I was like, we have two days to do this?
Yeah, business hours.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
And, and when this came up, we talked with our building department and said, we've, we've got this, this is essentially what we're doing. We also would need to refund ten percent of inspection fees if inspection fails and we don't provide in writing the reason for that failure within three business days. And that typically happens kind of on the spot. So that also goes into effect July first. Senate Bill Eleven-Sixty-Four was kind of nibbling around the same territory. One of the things that I think the, the building groups are pointing to in, in their desire to provide more housing is it's difficult to get through the permitting process sometimes, especially in smaller jurisdictions. And so this bill essentially says the city has ten business days for residential projects, twenty business days for commercial products, projects to review the application and determine whether or not the application is complete. You don't have to complete your review, you just have to look at it enough to say you've given us everything we need.
And then the forty-eight hour starts?
No, this is a separate bill entirely. This is just, this is simply reviewing the plan set that they submit, not inspections. The inspections happen after the plan sets approved and they've started construction. My guess is that this is a camel's nose under the tent. This was kind of a first shot at moving towards what is called a shot clock. If you don't get something reviewed quickly enough, it's deemed approved. And so I, that's not what this is, but that's, I think, where this is ultimately headed, that if you can't get your reviews done quickly enough, the, by waving the magic wand, it's deemed approved and away we go. Finance and urban renewal. House Bill Twenty-Five this year increased the funding for TECOM funding, which is transportation, expansion, congestion mitigation, which is a mouthful. That's a good thing. The bad thing is it didn't increase any funding for local agencies. All of the additional funding goes to the state level and it essentially has flatlined the amount of transportation we're going to see under this program looking out into the future. So where we were seeing incremental growth annually through this program, we're no longer going to see that. We're just going to get this same allocation at forty-five million dollars annually going out into the future. House Bill One Forty-two, this doesn't apply to us, this does apply to smaller cities. It increases the audit thresholds and this happens every so often. As inflation goes up, the value of that money gets smaller and so more and more smaller cities now have to go do more in-depth audits than they otherwise would have because inflation has essentially made that dollar different. So we'll occasionally see updates on those types of things and we've got a few of those bills this year where they've addressed inflation. This bill, House Bill Four Thirty-Six, does a few things, a couple that are probably not a huge issue for us and one that state, statewide may have some really significant impacts. First, it allows fire and ambulance districts to opt out of existing urban renewal districts if there's not existing debt. It's pretty rare, we actually happen to have one district, but it's pretty rare to have a district that doesn't have any existing debt, so that's not a huge change. Another piece of this, it adds, currently highway districts have this authority, it's adding fire and ambulance districts now. Before you create a district, you have to ask them to opt into the district for new districts. And then finally, it creates a process for city councils to essentially wind down an urban renewal agency over the objection of the urban renewal agency. The problem there is it causes doubt about the financial commitments that that agency has made and it may make it very difficult for the agencies to incur debt to do public improvements. We'll see what, how that shakes out in practice as we move forward. But it may make actually doing urban renewal projects more expensive or more difficult because banks are not likely to lend if they think their collateral might get wiped out because the council says we're just done with this and we're going to shut it regardless of whether there's any outstanding debt.
Lucky for us, we have an amazing urban renewal district.
Yeah, we do a pretty good job.
Yeah.
Local preemption, there's always a number of preemption bills every session. We'll run through some of those quickly. House Bill Thirty-two prohibits states and local governments from requiring face mask shields or other face coverings to prevent or slow infectious diseases. House Bill Forty-six prohibits state and local governments from requiring EV parking or even any like installing conduit to make it easier to put the EV parking at a later date. We can't require them to put in the conduit. House Bill Ninety-six prohibits states and local governments from flying any flag other than those listed, and that took effect immediately. That was an emergency, apparently. You may have seen the news around the state, this has become a hot-button issue to both to our north and to our south, so kind of fun. House Bill One Seventy-two, this maybe gets to the level of micromanaging, I'm not sure what you would call this, but it really governs how you put items on a consent calendar and it establishes that you can only put items that don't, that only require a simple majority on your consent calendar, which is, that's a good practice, that's what we do. And then it allows any council member to remove any item off of a consent calendar. Again, good practice, that's what we do, but that was not the universal practice in the state and now it will be. That will be the universal practice in the state. House Bill Two Forty-three, this one is a bigger issue in some of our larger cities. This essentially preempted all local regulation of childcare licensing. Court Lane had a robust childcare licensing program, many other larger cities did as well. Those kind of go by the boards. So there, that is all now subject to state regulation. Senate Bill Eleven Forty-One prohibits cities over a hundred thousand from allowing camping or sleeping on public property. Why a hundred thousand and not a number, another number? That's the joy of the sausage-making that is the legislative session. It was a compromise and that's where we're at. My guess is we will see in a, a run at extending this to all cities, highway districts and others in a future session. It's enforced, excuse me, enforced by a civil fine of up to ten thousand dollars if you're allowing camping on public property other than in, in a campground for recreational purposes. All right, so this one, Twelve-Ten, is kind of convoluted and it's hard to understand. It prohibits requiring any person to receive a medical intervention as a condition of employment, licensure, permit, entrance to public buildings. Seems pretty normal, pretty reasonable. Where it starts to get more difficult is you can't provide a different wage or other ongoing compensation as a, or benefit to encourage receiving an intervention. So this can get to some of your health programs, like your smoking cessation, some other types of things that are probably a good thing that you may want to do. You run the risk of running afoul of this bill. We've taken a look at our programs, we're pretty comfortable that we're fine. Luckily, you still can require personal protective equipment if it's an industry standard. If it's not, then I don't know what you do with that. Medical intervention is really, really broadly defined. A medical procedure, treatment device, drug, injection, medication, medical action taken to diagnose, prevent, cure, or alter the health or biologic function of a person. That's a lot of things that you could, like, an exercise program is potentially altering the health or biologic function of a human being. So creating those health incentives can create some real issues if you're providing a differential, like you, if you quit smoking, we'll give you a fifty percent bump on your, your salary. That probably runs afoul of this bill.
I mean, not smoking is not a medical procedure, treatment, device, drug, injection-
But it's a medical action taken to-
It's not a medical action. Anyway, okay, get it going.
I think smoking is fine, but I remember in the wellable program-
Yeah.
You do get credit for getting the COVID vaccine and I imagine that runs afoul of the-
Actually, the way that's structured, we think we're probably fine. It, it's a number of things and you're getting a point, it's, it's getting points towards something and so it's not a direct benefit for doing that. So I think that we're fine, we've taken a look at that. I think we're going to wait and see how this shakes out a little bit, but yeah.
If you take the amount of credit you get against the health insurance on your W-two and then divide that by the number of points you get per month, there is a dollar value to each of those points you earn, right?
But there's also a number of other ways you can get to that value. It's one of a multiple paths that you can do use to get to the points. So it's, it's-
You're not, yeah, so we're not requiring it, but you are, that does seem like it's still providing a benefit or a different way-
Compensation.
For someone who does it.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it's, this is a bill that I'm not sure how exactly it's going to play out. We, we've read through the fine print of our program, I think that we're fine, but it is certainly something we're watching and we'll see how it shakes out. All right, general city government bills. House Bill Two Fifty-three, this one is kind of an interesting bill. I'm not sure what the driver of this was. It allows public agencies to respond slower to public records requests if they're, in our case, coming from Washington or somewhere else. So we can take longer. If it's, we can respond in twenty-one days versus three days, or if it's a voluminous request, we can respond in thirty-five days rather than ten days. We can adopt a differential fee schedule so that we charge them the full cost of our time. If you're a resident, you get two free hours or a hundred pages. It does, those folks don't necessarily get that anymore. I would love to know the driver. I'm not sure what the issue was that brought this to the attention of the legislature, but here we go, we'll see, we'll see how it works out.
So a response would be defined as a fulfillment of the request?
Yes.
Not just, hey, we got your, got your email. Thirty-five days. Okay.
Senate Bill Ten Seventy-three. This one was watered down significantly through the legislative process. It essentially started out as, without definition, if you had a project-specific need, you could hire any garbage hauler you wanted, without any timeframes or parameters around what that looked like, which really kind of gets, destroys the ability for you to do any meaningful contracting for a citywide hauler, which we do largely to prevent extra trucks running around on the streets, creating additional wear and tear. If you have one hauler, you limit the amount of that happening. The legislature changed this significantly. You still, it still allows a person to contract with a garbage hauler of their choice for a temporary or project-specific reason, but it allows the cities in our ordinances to define what those terms mean. So it, it's, it's not going to be a huge sea change for us.
So this would apply to companies who do like the rent-a-dumpster thing in city limits, right?
It could, or it could even be someone who's got a garbage truck and they just want to haul and get, and find a way to get in around the franchise.
Okay, so are, then are we going to have to add the definitions for temporary and project-specific before July first?
Um, we will need to do something with it. We need to take a look at that. Senate Bill Eleven One-One-One-Eight, this is another essentially adjusting thresholds because of inflation, so it's raising the cost for, if you want to see quotes for a public works project versus bidding for a public works project, it's ratcheting those, those thresholds up to reflect the cost of doing the projects because more and more projects we're following, falling under the more restrictive levels, which drives up costs for us. A couple of concurrent resolutions I wanted to talk about. The first one, Senate Concurrent Resolution One-O-Seven was a request by AIC, the Association of Idaho Cities, to essentially ask for the legislature, legislature buy-in to a collaborative approach between local and state officials to work on issues collaboratively. It passed the Senate overwhelmingly, it couldn't even get a hearing in the House in, in the Germaine Committee for the House Local Government. Don't know what that means, but it failed to even get a hearing in local government. The land use side, the big change this year, and this is over the last two years, two years ago, the legislature created a new scheme for agriculture protection areas, which allowed landowners who are actively engaged in agriculture to protect their property and essentially limit growth of that property or a change of use on that property. When it was first adopted a year ago, that was not allowed in areas of city impact because those areas are really identified for future growth areas. This year, the legislature changed that and ag protection areas can now be cited within areas of impact. I don't know exactly what the impact of this will be. Where it might get interesting is if you have a large ag property that gets declared an ag protection area, that is not going to develop for twenty, forty years, however long it stays in that, that limitation. That may prevent you then from becoming contiguous with another property that may want to develop. We, like I said, we'll see how this shakes out over time. It's, this is going to be one where it's years in the making to know what the impacts are going to be. The last one, Senate Concurrent Resolution One-O-Three, this established a legislative interim committee to review the impact of local land use regulations on affordable housing. This in theory is modeled off of something that the state of Montana did three, four years ago that resulted in essentially the state passing a number of restrictions on cities on things that they could no longer prohibit in their land use code to allow more housing to be built. I don't know exactly how this one is going to play out, we're, we'll be keeping an eye on it and trying to stay engaged so that what, that, that the committee is hearing are concerns and hopefully looking at this from a balanced approach, but this one is definitely one we want to keep an eye on. The goal is for the committee to bring back to the next session a raft of proposed bills that might address how local land use regulations are impacting or limiting the ability to build more housing. And that's that.
I was watching through the window. Questions or comments on that?
Thank you.
Lots to chew on, thank you.
Yeah.
Just one thought I would like to give on the, on the presentation, this is more of a general thirty-thousand-foot level, but every year, there's more and more preemptive statutes on, on city authority. So, well, a lot of those, you know, a tenth of them look good on paper, then if, if the leadership at the state level ever changes, then if there's a mandate that cities, you know, must not or cannot do this, and that could easily change to say that, well, cities must do this. So if, if people of Post Falls want to maintain control of your city, I would recommend that you contact the state legislators and say, hey, can you guys knock this off? Because it's limiting our ability to raise revenue in the ways that we may need to raise revenue. It's restricting our ability to make decisions for what we feel is best for our city. Post Falls is not Boise, Post Falls is not Twin Falls. Post Falls is not Twin Falls. Post Falls is not Wallace. And so I don't, I don't think there's anything conservative about creating a more authoritarian state apparatus, and I would encourage folks that if you want your vote to count, and it counts the most locally-
Yep.
-then please contact your state legislators and tell them, you know, we got this.
Very well spoken, very well done.
All right. That's it for administrative and staff reports. Mayor and council comments, there is still 50 minutes left to vote if you haven't yet, so highly encourage you to go do that if you still haven't done it. Council, any comments?
I, I have some, I have a question about the Industrial Development Corporation, but I didn't want to ask it while we were just doing an appointment because I didn't want to, like, derail that part. So may I ask a couple of questions about that?
Sure.
I read in the part of the packet for the appointment that we needed it because there was a, a company that was requesting the bonds that this development corporation are able to issue. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay, and is when this, it says development corporation, which makes it sound private, but it's not, right? Like, it's a, a board or some sort of entity that the city manages?
Yes, and so the state allows for what's called industrial revenue bonds, and the corporation or board that oversees that is called the Industrial Development Corporation. We have issued bonds once in the past for ATC, which is an aerospace company here in Post Falls. We have a potential project called Project Wings that is looking to do some aerospace and expand in Post Falls, and so they've made a request to potentially issue up to $15 million in bonds. The Department of Commerce had asked us to basically update our program because the board members that were installed with the prayer bond sale, their terms had expired.
Okay, and, and I'm sorry for not having a solid understanding of this, but when we provide a bond for 15 million, that's out of the city's budget? That is something that the taxpayers vote on? Where does that money come from?
So the bonds are issued, and it's actually responsibility of the corporation that would pay for those bonds. It's somewhat similar to the CPACE program. This is just very specific to manufacturing only.
Okay, so that money is, comes from the private sector then, from like a bank?
Yes, yes.
Okay, it's not taxpayer money at all?
It is not, no.
Okay, does it come before city council, before it's approved, or is it just, it just goes through the Industrial Development Corporation, and then we don't really know what's going on?
I believe it just, I'm going to have to get back to you on that. I believe it just goes through the Industrial Revenue Corporation.
Gotcha.
The advantage for the folks on this one is it is tax-exempt, so they use our tax-exempt status. It only allows for 10 million of that to be tax-exempt, and then the rest would be taxable.
Okay, all right.
I will, I'll have to get back to you on, and I think this is another one, though. If the council wants us bringing it back to you, we can do so.
Okay, I'm not looking to, like, double-check them. I just never heard of this thing that we had, which, you know, I don't know everything, obviously, but then reading through, I was just curious about how that functioned and, and worried that it was like money coming out of the city budget or taxpayer dollars, and so I just wanted to confirm that.
And I will say, it's not a very highly-used-
Okay.
...option underneath the development options in Idaho because it is so specific to what can, what can use it, like a distribution company couldn't use it. It has to be manufacturing.
Gotcha.
Also, the corporation has to be under a certain size to use it. And so I know there's a list, Warren and I looked at it, there's maybe 20 agencies in Idaho that are set up to do this type of financing.
Gotcha. Okay, I, I would love to, if we move forward and are able to provide it, I'm sure that council and the public would love to hear about something that's coming to us, but I wouldn't request that it come back for less, for like us to approve or not approve.
Yeah, and then we can bring it back as a staff report and-
That'd be great.
-provide additional information once we're able. Right now, it's called Project Wings. I can't remember if I mentioned that at the beginning of this or not, but we do have a project name for it, but once we have more information, I'd love to bring it back and talk about it.
Sweet, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other council comments? We do not need an executive session?
We do not.
With that, final motion would be?
Adjourned.
Holes in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.